You are watching XS Laporte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Laporte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Laporte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Um, we're gonna stand up and we're gonna say to pledge allegiance, but we'd also like to have a moment of silence for Magistrate Walter Jonathan Forker, whom we just lost this last week. Rich?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republicans who voted, they wish to stand in his feet, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Gama Rosa.
President.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
And Commissioner Rosinski.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Consider agenda.
Madam President, I've got a couple of items to add to the agenda here this evening. A one for consider Ivy Works internship between Ivy Tech and Laporte County I T Department. The next consider an agreement between True Roll and Laporte County Auditorium, and then also consider a temporary burn ban for Laporte County due to the drought. I know earlier today, Mr. Di Martino emailed out a copy. I asked him yesterday to draw up a draft for us. Hopefully, we all were able to take a look at that, and I would ask those be added to the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider approval of September fourth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider claims for payroll.
Commissioners, we have payroll for the period ending nine, six, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, twenty-eight cents.
A motion to approve payroll as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Operating expense claims.
Uh, they would be in the amount of three million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, twenty-four cents.
Motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Public comment. We'll now open up public comment.
Steve Hollifield, six, seven, eight, two, east, one or south, Mill Creek. Are you guys gonna keep the solar energy systems fourteen, fifteen on the agenda and the moratorium on the agenda?
Yes, we should.
Gonna keep that? Okay. My comments would be considering the supplementing for the land use amendment. The Plan Commission passed. Other counties today, just quick research. Cosco has a one-mile radius before they could put one of these in. Setbacks for Spencer County is a thousand feet. They can't be within two miles of a residence. Another county I found was fifteen hundred feet setback. Then they also have a hundred-foot setbacks in Spencer County from any road, period, any road. Um, another one has a three-and-a-half-mile radius from any private landowners as well. They can't put these in. So I would think, I would hope you guys would kick this back to Plan Commission if possible, tell them to look at other counties' ordinances that have been down this road a lot further than we have and seen the issues to move forward with that done. And I would also hope you would consider kicking back to Plan Commission to consider this moratorium once again to get it past the election, because this election is gonna hold a lot of details coming up, especially the federal level if these tax incentives, tax credits, and tax breaks and subsidies continue for these green energy policies. Thank you.
Which which ordinance were you talking about first?
Uh, the first one would be the the amending and supplementing land usage for setbacks and everything else. They want the two hundred and fifty-foot setback, and we found several, and they also, a couple of counties also have property value guarantee. Spencer Park, Spencer, Spencer County has one and Posey County has one. And as you were, Mr. Haney, you were there, the attorney said it was almost impossible to add those in. Well, other counties are adding them in. They're not scared to take these people on, so I would consider that you would let, these people are coming in here and their rights are being violated. If they lose value of their homes, I think that should be addressed also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Name is Mike Rosenbaum. I'm currently a county councilman, and my address is fifteen fifteen Indiana Avenue. You've added something to the agenda that I'd like to discuss. There is a consideration for a contract with a new vendor for the auditor's office. That contract is a two-year contract. The fee is based upon performance, but it does require employees to forward information and take time out of their their monthly schedule. This is not a person that has been discussed or mentioned to me as the possibility or most likely possible person as the incoming auditor, and I would have liked to have at least the opportunity to have discussed this and discussed and met with or had a conversation with the vendor. In the past, with another situation such as Baker Tilly, they're a known commodity. They're known in our community. They have serviced us in our community before, so to roll forward a contract for them would would be um, would be uh, fine, but we also had to go to bring it back to a one-year contract because we should not oblige the county for anything more than a year. So that is also another concern that we have. We are, and on some other contracts where there was a little bit of conversation, we are going into a I C conference starting next Monday, where a lot of vendors will be at. It's a great opportunity to meet people and discuss things, so trying to put this in now, I don't believe is a is a good time. And especially when someone has been in office for over three years, has not done this before, and now trying to bring it in just before they leave. It may be the right thing to do, but the attitude or dealing with the incoming auditor should definitely take some courtesy, professionalism, and that has not been allowed so far. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tim Stavos, county auditor. I'll go up during public comment since it's uh, I'd like to discuss the same issue at this time. Um, we are working for the people of Laporte County through the very last day that we are employed. We're not lame ducks, and we are here to serve the people in the office of the auditor, and one of the ways we can serve the people, and I'm sure they would want us to do, is people that have two homesteads that are cheating, say people live in Chicago and have a house in Long Beach and have two homesteads, is that we need to be able to go after them, hold them accountable, and collect the money from them. And there are professional firms that can look at a huge database and are established to do this type of thing, and True Roll is one of them. I um, take exception to Mr. Rosenbaum's notion that we have not been cooperative with him. I was cooperative with him during the budget process around making sure we get uh, money budgeted for the future auditor that we never had budgeted for these types of contracts in case those contracts are messed with by, say, the commissioners or future commission. So we've been very cooperative. I certainly think it's reasonable to suggest that maybe this contract be modified to one year, but to deprive the taxpayers of Laporte County the ability to collect from a firm that only collects a thirty percent um, commission versus someone that was used years ago who staff members, a different firm that staff members expressed disappointment with the way they operated, and they charged a forty percent uh, premium or forty percent commission. This is a way to collect money for the taxpayers. I would urge you to not wait. I think reasonable discussions can be had between reasonable people about the term of the contract, but uh, the public needs to be served continuously. Notions that this is political, uh, it's not political. It's intended to serve the taxpayers and um, collect uh, taxes that are owed. You can go back up to three years for people that have homesteads that they don't have a right to have, and uh, we think it's the right thing to do. But notions that we have not been cooperative, uh, we we have a job to do through the end of the the year. Uh, and so we've been very cooperative, but uh, we've got a job to do. Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mike Callum's one fifty-nine Regency here in Laporte. I just wanted two things tonight. First of all, I wanted to say thank you and commend the Commission for having the workshop like we just had on the solar farms. Uh, it's an important issue. It's difficult to be informed, so being able to attend these meetings, I've been to several at this point, I think is important, and without those, we don't get the information that we need, so I appreciate that. Secondly, and I know Mr. Haney just brought it up about the burn ban, uh, that's gonna be discussed later. I planned to talk about it when I got here, and as I walked into the building, the emergency services were notified here in Laporte County that state fire marshal has issued a burn ban across the state of Indiana. That being said, uh, I would encourage the Commission to work with Mr. Savi at E M A to get the message out to the residents here in Laporte County, uh, having experience as a volunteer firefighter and a police officer over the years. Even though the burn ban's in place, some people aren't informed about it, and some people don't follow it. Uh, everybody will recall a couple of years ago, we had a huge wildland fire down near the Fish Lake area that was so uh, invasive and so large, they had to bring in a helicopter to be able to douse the flames. Uh, our volunteer fire departments, uh, God bless them, they're overworked, they're undermanned. Just yesterday, Cool Spring Township had eleven calls in a twenty-four-hour time period. That's a department that's running twelve hundred calls a year. Uh, and we need to do what we can to help them, and helping them by making sure that people understand that this burn ban is important. It's important for everybody's safety. It's important uh, for the operations of the county. And I would encourage the Commission to work with the E M A and the others in the county emergency services to make sure everybody's informed about that so we don't get into the problem that we had a couple of years ago down off of State Road Four. Thank you for your time.
And I just wanted to say thank you because last time you were here, you brought up the railroad um, crossing, and we did have someone out there fixing it, so appreciate you coming to us and and bringing up the issues because we can't fix them unless we know about them, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Harold Parker, two, twenty-six oh-two, East State Road Four. I got a little problem with the drainage board. They uh, killed some of our crop two years ago, and they denied it the claim this year, stating off this law I have on for you on here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Their claim is that they can go in anytime on a seventy-five-foot rideaway and do whatever they want and not pay for the damages of the crops they run over. And two years ago, they sprayed, I don't know what they sprayed with, but this is what ended up happening. To about five thousand dollars. My son's losses. So uh, they claim and, you know, there's twelve months in a year, and they and they've, they're going into the crop, growing crop. This is the third time they've done it, and they just went again in uh, into July again and went down. They don't go down the other side of the ditch because it's not nice and cleaned off. It's got trees and stuff in it. What I propose that we change this to keep them out of growing crops, unless it's an emergency like a Beaver Dam or a tree or a bridge breaks, you know, emergency's emergency, and that's what that law is for. But it's not for spraying dandelions in the ditch.
This was drainage board, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I went in front of the board and they cited this law, and the lawyer said, don't pay, so. If they do that, electric lines, they pay, and I have plenty of those transmission lines I'm gonna need for all the solar stuff going on there, so. I don't want a president said that they don't need to pay. And the railroad, so.
All right.
You got any more questions? Can I give you more information? They know about it. They've already done it, so. I'm not gonna put anybody on the docket, but.
Well, I serve also on the drainage board, so I will call over there.
I don't.
In the suburbs, it's a little more difficult because we work on roads. We're not working, you know, I'm not working on drainage, but we'll, I'll look into it, I promise you, and then I'll.
You know, about three or four more times, I can afford to go against them and sue them.
Okay.
But for five thousand dollars, probably cost me a hundred, uh, twenty thousand dollars to get all the legal work and somebody set up, and I just soon solve it here or change a law or get some of my legislators get in there. Emergency is a different thing than just, okay, it's nice, flat with beans growing, and let's spray it up in the air and kill. You know, that was six or seven acres, not one.
Wow.
And I pay rent up to the ditch. I don't pay rent up to the seventy-five foot, so.
Thank you for.
Just make it aware that that's shouldn't be common practice. That's not what we do is plant crops or somebody to come in and destroy.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Public comment. Do we have anyone on Zoom for public comment? Come on up.
Bill Allison, five, seven, nine, one, East State Road, one oh four. I agree with Steve. You guys should pass the moratorium and kick the the ordinances back down to the Plan Commission because there's other counties that's got stronger ordinances now, and they're not afraid to take on, take on anybody else. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Harry Nun will be closing public comment, and we'll move on to department head comments. Wait till the, we do the the ban. We go to the ban. Are there anyone from uh, department heads on Zoom? Okay, Harry Nun, we're gonna close pub, um, department head comments. Request, we have none, and we'll move on to old business. Consider Plan Commission's approval for resolution and amending and supplying land usage and as adopted to adopt section fourteen dash fifteen solar energy systems.
This current uh, recommendation from the Plan Commission comes unanimously. All nine members uh, voted in favor of it. One of, one of the thoughts we should consider here tonight is passing this does not mean we cannot continue to look at it and strengthen it. That's something that we talked about during the Plan Commission. Um, you know, it's a nine-member board, and uh, it's, it's rare you can get nine, all nine people on the same page for something, but, you know, a lot of work went into this to strengthen it quite a bit from the previous one, and of course, the previous one was uh, brand-new in the county. There was no solar ordinance at all prior to that, prior to twenty twenty-one. It would, it would be my recommendation to pass this and then uh, also um, ask the Plan Commission to take another look in reference to some of the other things that have been passed. The Jasper County ordinance, for example, was just passed in August, which coincidentally enough was, August was the same month that we passed uh, uh, this out of the Plan Commission. That's on our agenda here for this evening. One of the concerns that I have about voting this down here tonight would be that we would need to start the entire notice process again. And in doing so, that's gonna be probably close to ninety days before the, or before, by the time you know, get all, everything together, notice everything, best case would probably be ninety days from today to actually get something back here to look at. Passing, passing this now, strengthening it, and then looking to add further strength, further tightening to it if we need it, is uh, would probably be the better way to go because then, at least in that interim, there's something stronger, and it was passed unanimously, which makes it uh, much easier, in my opinion, especially for this one, much easier to hold up in court. If we have another one that's split, let's say, five, four, or something along those lines, who knows? But our, the legal counsel for the Plan Commission has been very concerned about litigation, and I think we all feel pretty confident that what we have right here uh, likely won't be challenged in court, and if it is, it it's almost certainly guaranteed to hold up.
Now, when you say we, that's because you serve on the board, correct?
Correct.
And so that was, and you're the president on that board?
Correct.
And so everybody on that board agreed with it?
Yes, it was passed unanimously, nine to zero.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'd be inclined to uh, think that if you, if we pass it, they're under no obligation whatsoever to change anything. Whereas if we table it, so we can have further discussion to know exactly what we're voting on. I would be more inclined to table this uh, until the next meeting.
For what it's worth, um, and I believe this is what Mr. Viji said, and uh, Mr. Di Martino, you can um, clarify on this as well if you know.
Time limit. You're gonna, you're gonna need to make, you're gonna need to move one way or another tonight.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be up against a time limit for all the notifications, everything, and then in addition to that, the Board of Commissioners here tonight can either approve it or deny it. They, they can't make any, they can't make, we can't make any modifications to this as it is here tonight. So the risk would be that, you know, for the next ninety days, let's say, you know, minimum, these additional protections uh, for the people in Laporte County would not be in effect. Obviously, if you send it back to the Plan Commission, technically, you know, if five of the four, you know, the majority of the board decides they don't want to revisit it, then it doesn't get revisited anyway. They're not under an obligation to pass it again or pass something else and send it on. I would think that, and people were, when the discussions that we had during the meeting, if, if you have a chance to go back and watch the meeting, we had some very good discussions. I think all of us agree that if circumstances changed or anything else changed, that I think all of us are more than willing to. Again, I'm only speaking because everybody said so publicly um, during the meeting, um, that everybody's more than willing to take another look at this and and give it, you know, give any improvements it is, but at the same time, we got a lot of pushback from the solar companies, and I would, I would like to pass something that's good now and then improve, and then certainly try and improve upon it after that. But I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here, not pass this, and then we have people building, you know, because our, under our current ordinance, two hundred and fifty feet from the property line is significantly further than what we have now. Most, most of the stuff is from residences. And that was somewhat of a sticky point there, but we were able to get that through, so. Be my recommendation and my motion to, to pass this um, this evening.
So Mr. Di Martino, just so I understand, one, one, when would be? Do we have the option to go at least two more weeks or?
Do not.
We do not.
Because this is already August twenty-eighth.
Okay, so Rich, do you have any?
It'll be into October then, so.
So Rich, do you have any um, major concerns that have, you know, I know that I, I was able to look at it myself. Is there anything that you feel that in that contract that would drastically change, or is it something that we could probably get passed tonight? And then whatever we are looking at, then we would be able to go back to the Plan Commission and talk to them about different things that we might want to change. Is there any additional information that you've been given that you feel at this point, we just can't move forward with this?
I think some points have been brought up. I, I really haven't had a chance to discuss it with anybody, to tell you the truth.
So Mr. Haney, could I ask you, when um, you were having the discussions at the Plan Commission, were the same individuals there with the same issues? Because again, I, I, I do feel we need to move forward with this, um, but I want to make sure that we're covering every end of it. So were the same issues being brought before the Plan Commission that have been brought before the Commission, and is there at any point? Because I, I, I do agree with you. When we were looking at the setbacks, we did go a lot further back than we had originally started with, and I know that there were some concerns that the vendor had because they were gonna actually be losing more ground, and they weren't going to profit as much. So gee, is there anything different that happened at the Plan Commission that you've heard here?
Prior to tonight's comments, um, all the comments that we, that that have been presented to the Board of Commissioners have been presented, and then some to the Plan Commission in the meetings that we've held. Tonight, there were one or two new things because uh, like Jasper, for example, passing their ordinance, they passed it in August. Uh, theirs is, um, and I've glanced at it. I haven't looked specifically at all the verbiage for what sizes it applies to versus small-scale, large-scale, those other things. Um, theirs does seem to be stronger than what we passed. Uh, you know, definitely seems to be stronger than what, what we passed. But again, that was in August, and that was information that is just now becoming available. So um, it's definitely something worth looking into because some of the, some of the stuff that we've heard here tonight are things that we're hearing for the first time as far as, you know, either, you know, mile from uh, somewhere, went a mile from a well, something along those lines. Uh, there was some other stuff that was said during the workshop at least, um, that, that, that are things that are just, have now come to light here this evening that we never heard before tonight.
So is there any way of verifying this prior to us voting?
I'm sorry, verify what?
That, like, say hypothetically, that, that a new ordinance was passed somewhere else and that they did.
Well, Jasper, but Jasper County is different than Laporte County. Jasper County is much more rural. Uh, you know, it's a different, different thing. What you have before you is you have a nine-oh from the Plan Commission. Your decision is to accept it? Reject it. You have to make a decision tonight. You don't have an additional two weeks to go ahead and do it.
Okay, so then we have, okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor in a second. Um, would anyone like to have any other discussion?
Yeah, not now, but um, definitely want to tear it apart and uh, make sure what we're signing.
Well, and I, I, I think, you know, at some point we would like you to go ahead and, because you as the president kind of look into the issues that were brought forward today.
I'm happy to. After, after this, I'll make a motion to that effect, and we can formally uh, formally send it from the board.
So do you wanna um, change the motion?
No, I, I, no, I, for, for clarity's purposes for passing, yeah, we'll, we'll want to pass this um, clean and then do a separate motion for that. That way, there's no uh, confusion from the legal standpoint, so we want to make sure, you know, nothing gets, any, if somebody does decide to sue based upon these restrictions, that we can defend it as vigorously as possible, and it's as clean and neat as possible.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And for this, do we need a second reading or no? This is?
No.
After this, okay, okay, cool.
Yes.
All right, uh, so, so then I would uh, make a motion uh, uh, from the Board of Commissioners asking the Plan Commission to take a, to, to, to take another look at some of the information that was presented here tonight. And, and see what, if anything, we need to tighten um, tighten up from this new ordinance that we just passed.
Second that.
So we have a motion and a such, second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Consider Plan Commission deny ordinance opposing, uh, imposing a moratorium on filing and accepting new applications for large-scale solar farms until April third of twenty twenty-five.
I'd make a motion to approve that, send it back to them.
Uh, I'm sorry, can you, are, are you going to accept their passage or reject it? If you're gonna reject it, you're gonna send it back to them. Right? They, they, it failed at the, underneath here.
Yeah, it was a seven to two vote.
So if it failed.
So they denied an ordinance imposing a, a moratorium.
So you're gonna reject their find, I, I don't, either you're gonna reject their finding and send it back to them?
Correct.
Or you're gonna wait?
That's my motion.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is to uh, reject it, send it back to them, and ask them to, and ask Plan Commission to reconsider.
To reconsider moratorium until February, until uh.
Given the um, given some of the new information here tonight, there's no reason not to, for uh, I, I can't find a reason not to uh, take another, take another look at this with some of the new information that we have, so I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider road use agreement between Blue Stem Solar and Laporte County.
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I, I, I will second that so that we can um, uh, have a discussion on it.
So we have a motion and a second, open for?
Sure, um, Commissioner Rosinski, what um, what are some of the issues you're seeing, seeing here with this? Because you spent, you spent a lot of time working on it. I'd just like to.
The new information that we've got, the suggestions that we got from the Highway Department would be one thing that I would like to talk about. There was some other suggestions made tonight at the workshop. We'll talk about.
Is this the road use agreement?
Yes.
My recommendation at this time would be to table it until the next meeting so that we can work on those additional issues with the Highway Department, but you all can do. So that we can work on those additional issues with the highway department, but you all could do.
I mean, I've been working on this for a long time. Uh, uh, we've had at least five revisions and then new stuff comes to light today.
Yes.
And I think we should at least consider it. So that's why I want to table this. And I see no reason why I wouldn't be ready to be voted on at our next meeting, Oc- October second.
Very good.
Any more discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then consider decommissioning plan agreement between Blue Star Stem Solar and Lepore County.
Motion to approve.
Uh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I would recommend commissioners that with the approval, we just have a contingency in there that Mr. Novak and myself or Mr. Novak and Mr. Pageak just clarify the assignment issue that was brought up in the workshop and then pending, uh, council's approval, it'd be, it'd go into full force and effect.
Would add that contingency to the motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Moving on to new business, consider FM, oh, yeah, consider FM EC notice of receiving bids for farmland rental.
Motion to approve. We need to get that out.
Um, I'll second that. I do have a question. Um, I see in the packet here tonight, we have a, um, we have the old, we have an old version in here where I think it's a, if I remember correctly, glance in here, I think it was something like a hundred dollars an acre. But then, um, this one from several years back, um, this one, uh, here that's in our packet tonight, uh, I don't see any dollar value, um, on here.
Well, it's, it's a bid, right? So the folks that are gonna farm it.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah.
Gonna bid.
Receiving the bid, okay. All right, so there's no minimum. We're just whatever people bid and would pick the best, most responsive bid. Okay. Very good. All right, uh, thank you.
Well, I mean, so if you want to change this bid to have a minimum per acre, you can go ahead and put a floor. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I.
That's your call.
I, I don't necessarily know if we need, need a floor per se. I mean, I know, I know the current going rate per acre is above a hundred, but, um, I mean, I would think anybody who wants, it's a sizable chunk of land, somebody who'd want to farm it would submit hopefully a competitive bid. I would, but I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, even if you get a bid that you don't like, you don't have to accept.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put them back up again.
Right.
I get a feeling there'll be more than one bid.
I don't think so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we'll tackle the ones that we added on. Consider Ivy Works inter- internship between Ivy Tech and Lepore County IT Department.
Um, yes, I've been working with Ivy Tech out of, um, Michigan City in Valparaiso, and they have a grant currently through, uh, you know, their Ivy Works program to, um, reimburse the county for eighty hours of work, you know, twenty hours a week for four weeks on an intern. Um, up to fifteen dollars an hour and they pay back FICA also. And, but it is, the specifications on this internship would be females in the industry, you know, in the technology field. That's what this grant supports. Um, but, you know, I would like to continue it with other grants with them. And they said, you know, once this is, because then at that point, we become a vendor for them so they can reimburse the county for the salaries. You know, we would not have to redo that to get back into other grants, you know, to where they could reimburse the county for us.
Motion to approve. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. I think that's a great idea because we're getting young people into the field. So appreciate you going out there and looking for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Hale also needs permission to approach the council to get this funded.
Permission to, uh, granted?
Thank you.
So we have.
Uh, second.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consider agreement between Truro and Lepore County Auditor.
I would, I would make a motion to, uh, approve the agreement for a one-year term.
For the sake of, uh, discussion, I'll step down as president and I will, um, second the motion, open for discussion. So my concern here is, um, we have an auditor who's been in office for three years and nine months. And now what was proposed to us was a two-year contract. We have a new auditor entering at the beginning of the year. The new auditor made.
Or did they have a contract out? Whatever.
Someone's got an open mic.
So, um, the idea that, and I heard what Councilman Rosebaum said, next week, there is a conference giving him the ability to get out there and actually meet some of the vendors and, and build a relationship himself with someone. I don't think that three months is going to, um, hurt us at this point.
Um, if I could comment, um, uh, I'm aware of two major vendors that, that do this work. I'm, I'm sure there probably are others, but two of the major vendors, tax management associates who we used before. Um, and there was not, um, there was disappointment with, from looking at from my staff and, and this firm. And of course, we've done our research and, uh, they seem to me to have a more comprehensive database to find all kinds of different things that they can look for to, uh, they come up with a list of candidates and then the actual, uh, investigatory work is done by my office. So we, we do consider this to be within our statutory authority and, um, uh, you know, we, again, we have a job to do through the end of the year. Um, if, if Mr. Rosebaum had a, a democratic opponent or any opponent, um, you, you wouldn't be considering, uh, what he wants. I, we've been, again, very accommodative in a number of ways, including other contracts that we didn't bring before you after speaking with him. Uh, because they don't need to start doing their work until January and it's for something that's not time sensitive. But again, to delay, to delay the, the, the work of finding these people, once you roll them over, well, to delay the work of, of finding these people is to delay potential tax revenue to the citizens of Lepore. So we think that one year is a very reasonable compromise. There are contracts that the county does left and right that roll over into the new year, uh, and cross over political periods. So we, we think it would be, um, you know, we are the auditor of Lepore County and we got a job to do. We would ask you to support us in that, in that reasonable compromise of a one-year, a one-year contract. Um, I doubt they would do six months and we, you know, we, I, they, uh, but, you know, so we thought one, that that was a reasonable compromise, one year.
Are you done?
Something you said struck a chord with me, sir. You are the auditor and, and, uh, it is your job. I, I would, I would rather see the auditor show up once in a while and, and do this work himself instead of farming more stuff out. That's my feelings.
In the three years and nine months, in the three years and nine months, who have you used?
Oh, this is something that you do episodically every, you know, you don't do it constantly. So, uh, we haven't used anyone, but it, I believe it was done once during the eight years of the previous auditor. It may have been done twice. I don't know. So this is not unusual. But I think really that, you know, we dealt with a whole, uh, battery of assaults on this office at your workshop a couple of days ago. And if we're gonna turn it into.
Again, you know, we're not gonna go into what.
On the auditor, then we're gonna get into a nasty fight here because I chose not to go up to the podium during department head comments to defend the authority uh, and the honor of my office when I was defamed by you, Commissioner Graham Rosa. So if you want to vote it down, go to vote it down. We're looking to our legal options. Um, the state passed the law in July. Look into our legal options about whether we can.
And sir, why do you come here?
Contract ourselves.
Sir, why do you come here? Why do you come here? If you, if you want to do whatever you want to do in nine, in three years and nine months, you've taken no action on this whatsoever. Three months before the end of your term, you want to take action and now you want to throw legal statute at us telling us that you can sign your own contracts. By God, do it.
Go ahead and vote it down then, Commissioner.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Deprive the citizens of Lepore County of something that is rightfully something they're entitled to.
Something that you haven't done in three, three years and nine months.
Done constantly. But my staff looks at, at, they look at these things. They look at death notices. They do their job. This is over and above. This is something that involves investigatory work. Um, I don't think it warrants the type of criticism that you're meeting out right now. That's, uh.
Sir, you're speaking out of term. This is, this is where we get to vote on, on items. I'll give you the floor to speak and say whatever you want, but would you just let us know when you're done? So that we can go ahead with our vote.
I think your vote is for ordained, so go ahead.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. We've had our discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Moving on. Consider executive order for Lepore County, uh, Board of Commissions for burn ban. Now, this is something that, um, Councilman Randy Novak brought to us around one o'clock yesterday afternoon. We, uh, we happened to meet with, uh, Guy Di Martino at that time. It is something that we went to Farm Bureau last night and a lot of the farmers came to us and they were talking to us about it's, um, it's something that I think is profoundly affecting a lot of the county. So we've asked Mr. Sabey to come and you can give your spiel.
Good evening. Uh, Rob Sabey with, uh, Lepore County Emergency Management. And as you said, uh, Randy Novak, who is actually, he's also the, um, Lepore County Fire Chiefs Chairman. Um, he has contacted all the eighteen fire departments. Um, they're all in agreement with, uh, the burn ban. Um, I know that we've been in contact with the weather service the past couple of weeks and every day it gets worse and worse and worse. And right now that they're not seeing any end in sight here in the next, you know, few days. The, the ground, uh, surface water table is, is really bad right now. There's hardly any water in this, the, the surface. Um, as talking to the farmers, if you go around the county, you can see that how the crops are all pretty much dry. Um, unless they've had irrigation on them, they're, the, the beans, they're already picking beans and everything, which is pretty early, I believe, this time, for this time of year. But, it is a, a dangerous situation. Right now, there's, I think, forty-nine counties in the state of Indiana that's already declared a, a burn ban. And I'm sure that's gonna increase as the next few days go on. So this is, uh, something that, uh, I, the commission has authority to do with the, the emergency situation is to put a burn ban out. Once that's done tonight, we will, uh, put a rave alert out, make sure it'll go on our, um, Facebook page, um, and, uh, go on the county website. And we can get it up, excuse me, get it out to the media so that, uh, you know, everybody's aware of it. And the fire departments have the authority to, uh, to enforce it. So if there's somebody out there burning that shouldn't be burning, they can, uh, they can enforce that and, and, uh, I believe there's plans that they can levy towards that.
Thank you, Mr. Baby.
Approve the burn ban. Good idea.
Second that and thank you, Mr. Di Martino, for drawing this up so quickly. I know, I know I put you on short notice yesterday. Um, also, the, um, uh, this ban, uh, is just for public certification is gonna go through October second. And obviously, you know, I, hopefully, we re, uh, we revisit this on, at our next meet, that'll get us to our next meeting to decide if we need to go again. It's gonna take more than one, just to prepare the public, it's gonna take more than one rainfall to, to get us back where we need to be. We're gonna need a couple of really good soakers. So I would anticipate unless something really crazy happens with a major rainstorms between now and the second, we're gonna probably need to extend this at least another two weeks.
This has been a kind of a weird weather pattern we've been in. I mean, we, we're getting rain on both sides of us. And it just seems to be like Indiana and Ohio are pretty much dry. Um, actually, the weather's been really nice, but then pretty dry. Um, but as soon as I get a copy of that, uh, we'll get that posted, um, it'll go down to the state and, uh, then it'll get posted on the state's website also, so.
I think we'll all hang out here after the meeting, make sure we get it signed straight away.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That concludes. So I have a motion for adjournment.
Adjourn.
A second.
We have a mo- a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.